Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth School Committee Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting, at the most, 45 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to five questions, but that will depend on the length of time of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered or things they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Dan Sullivan, one of the four candidates running for two full-term seats for the Plymouth School Committee in the Plymouth Town election. Dan, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alrighty, we're going to start the timer, and I'm going to start right in with the first question. Okay, "The school committee has four primary responsibilities as outlined on the Plymouth Public Schools website. One of them is to advocate for the school system with both citizens and town government. What data can you draw from to make your case for the strength and the outcomes of the K-12 system?"
Are you speaking of in general or with the Plymouth School District? I'm looking at the school district strategic plan, okay? And what I see is that the mission of the school is progressive school district. Progressive means different things to different people, okay? So, when I look at the strategic objectives, inclusive and equitable education, equity, diversity, and inclusion, what do we mean by that? How do we define it? How do we implement it? How do we measure it? Okay? That's really important, and I think what's most important is I look at the strategic plan of our superintendent of schools that I pulled right off the website. And this is, to me, is the most important point. He writes, "Plymouth is not meeting the gap narrowing the targets for students and high-need students across the district." So, the town of Plymouth is spending a lot of money on its public education. In fact, the numbers show that we're spending, we have the 18th largest expenditure in the state, and there's approximately 302 school districts. So, we're spending a lot of money. That actually computes out to just under $20,000 per student we're spending. So, I look at that and I say, "We're not getting our bang for the buck. We're not getting the results." And so, I look at that and say that we're coming up short. Our report card is below average. And so, we need to focus on student performance, and we need to focus on how we're going to measure that student performance.
Is it focused, there must be some way to measure our student performance now?
Well, you know, they use things like the MCAS, okay? They also use things like advanced placement participation rates. So, in terms of MCAS, the majority of the students, according to the Mass Department of Education, are not meeting or partially meeting the expectations in our core disciplines. So, we're talking math, sciences, English, language, and the arts, okay? You can also look at our advanced placement rates. Plymouth North, advanced placement rates is 43%. Plymouth South is 52%, okay? And so, we're really coming up short.
What is the average? You know, if that's Plymouth, do you know what the average is for other school systems? Percentage-wise of AP?
Well, what they do is they rank. So, Plymouth South is ranked 186 out of 340 Massachusetts high schools. Simple math, that's the bottom third. Plymouth South is ranked 194th out of 340 Massachusetts high schools. So, again, in the bottom third. So, we're spending in the top 18. We're 18 out of 302 school districts in terms of money spent, but we're in the bottom third in terms of our high school advanced placement rates. Now, that's only one part of education, but that's one indicator or one measurement we can look at. There are others.
Such as?
Well, you can look at graduation rates, but graduation rates are kind of a misnomer. And I'll give you a couple examples. So, one of my nieces graduated in a neighboring public school system. She did not meet the remedial standards commensurate with her graduating, completing four years of high school. So, she went to a local community college to build up her remedial skills so that she then can pursue a college degree. It shouldn't happen. You should, every graduate should be proficient across the board in all the core disciplines. That's not happening now. I mean, they call it a learning gap. There are a lot of administrators and bureaucrats and politicians that blame the pandemic for that, but that actually, I'm a nurse, the pandemic didn't cause the learning gap. It was the lockdown and the shutdown that caused the learning gap. So, we have a learning gap. The majority of the students have a learning deficit, okay? So, we really need to double down and close that gap so that all of our graduates, and Plymouth has a high graduation rate, but graduation rates is not necessarily an indicator of proficiency, okay? My son went to another neighboring public school district. Exceptional student, high aptitude, high motivation, and he was enrolled in all advanced placement curriculum, okay? And he's now a successful engineer. So, you're looking at both sides of it. One neighboring school district, below average, got to go to a community college to build up their remedial skills. Another neighboring school district, really promoted advanced placement curriculum, and my son excelled, and he now excels as a working professional.
Okay, so, you've cited when you're looking at the data of how you're almost grading how the Plymouth Public Schools are doing, you're looking at MCAS, you're looking at AP, you're looking at graduation rates. What about all the other things that are offered in Plymouth? And how do, like, all the different VOTEC-style courses that are offered? How do you measure those, the success or failure of those?
Well, you know, it's a fair question. I'm not, I don't believe that, first of all, I don't believe that it one-size-fits-all education. I don't believe that the only trajectory for a student is college-bound. So, I really do believe in the value of vocational trade units and alternative educational pathways. I think one of the things that our school district is struggling with, and I think a lot of school districts are struggling with, is openness and transparency about the performance of our students, about what's being taught in our districts, and about what's being taught in our classrooms. It's very difficult to source that information. When I decided to become a candidate, I went to the school administration building, and I said, "Hey, you know, I don't have a child in this school district, but I am a taxpayer, and I am somebody who believes in the value of education. Can you provide me some data?" And what they did is they referred me to the Mass DOE, the Mass Department of Education. That information, quite honestly, should be readily available. Somebody comes in that, you know, is a taxpayer or a resident of the town, and you ask them for information, it should be like a handout. Here you go, here's the good, the bad, the ugly. Here's our performance. And so, it's difficult for somebody who's not on the inside to find out what's really going in on the inside. So, all we can do is if you go to the Mass DOE, most of the data is centered around graduation rates and MCAS. And I don't think that graduation rates and MCAS performances are the sole indicators of a good education.
Okay, alright. Question number two. "There are four candidates running for two three-year terms. Each brings a different set of experiences and history. Given that one of the responsibilities of the school committee is to develop school system policies, how do you balance your own views and biases to serve the greater good of the entire K-12 system?"
Okay. You know, I think as a candidate, there's a difference between somebody who may have ambition and somebody who has an agenda. I come to this job, I don't have an agenda. I'm not looking to do anything more than to advocate for the students, for their parents and guardians, and for the taxpayers of Plymouth. I work as a nurse, and the number-one responsibility of a registered nurse is to advocate for the patients. It's not to advocate for the hospitals, it's not to advocate for the doctors, it's not to advocate for the insurance companies, it's to advocate for the patients. We're the eyes, ears, and mouth for our patients. We're the conduit between the patients and the doctors and all the other providers. So, I think advocacy is number one. I think number two is assessment, is you have to look at what the school district, its performance as of today, okay? And so, as a registered nurse, I'm going to bring those two skills that I've developed as a registered nurse, and that is to look, to advocate, and to assess, to come up with a plan that's going to improve our deficiencies. And as the superintendent of schools noted, is we're not meeting our needs. So, the superintendent acknowledges that we're coming up short. So, that's what I would look to do. I don't want to bring politics, I don't want to bring ideology, I don't want to bring activism to the job. I want to bring common sense to the job. I also want to bring truth. I think amongst, and I think this is a general statement among our governing class, there are not enough truth-tellers out there. So, I want to really speak the truth, I want to promote openness to the students, the parents, and the taxpayers as well, and tell them what's really going on.
Okay, so, to get back to one of the points of my question, if you have a personal feeling about something, and the rest of your committee doesn't share your views, how do you circle that square? How do you stick to your own guns about what you believe, but understand that you're speaking for, or the outcomes might speak for the entire district that might not always agree with you?
Sure. Well, I think one of the things, so, I just served on my hospital's collective bargaining committee. We just renegotiated a new contract with my hospital. I'm a member of the Mass Nurses Association, and one of our mottos was that we're not going to let perfect get in the way of good, okay? So, we had a large committee, and everybody had different perspectives. And I believe in doing the greatest good for the greatest amount of people, okay? In healthcare, we call it harm reduction. We want to reduce harm, okay? Because we want to promote patient safety and optimal health outcomes. Well, that's what I want to do as a school committee person, is I want to promote optimal outcomes for our students, their parents and guardians, as well as the taxpayers.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. Question three. "The school budget makes up a large portion of the town's overall budget, and priorities for spending are often dictated by the needs of buildings' upkeep and maintenance, collective bargaining outcomes, and mandates, funded or not. What approach do you take to decide what gets approved and what needs to be cut?"
It's about priorities. It's about setting priorities. You know, as a registered nurse, we prioritize every day, every shift. Who do we attend to first? Who's our number-one priority? Who's our last priority? So, I think it's a setting priorities. And I think the most important priorities are those priorities that are going to impact the student the most. I understand that this past January, there was a sort of a contentious budget negotiation. And one of the things that struck me, and I'm flipping through, was there was a, back in January, there was a town meeting where they were discussing the budget, and the superintendent of schools, well, the finance committee proposed a budget reduction, and the superintendent of schools said our concern, and the school committee's concern, is that we would see a reduction in force quite significantly. As I mentioned, we would see at least a reduction of at least four administrators, as well as seven to 10 additional staff within the school department. I'm going to be candid, as a school committee member, my concern isn't to protect the jobs of administrators. My concern is to promote the education of the students, okay? So, I think that in every budget, there's an opportunity to make the budget more palatable and more effective. You just have to prioritize. So, I'm not professing that I have all the answers. In fact, I don't. What I bring to the job is common sense.
So, just in terms of the staff that was going to be let go from the school department itself, do you feel that there's a lot of fat in the school department? Or, because they have to do, let me ask you this question, doesn't every position in the school department have a specific function, whether it's reporting or communicating with the parents or whatever it is? Getting rid of that many people, would that make some systems less efficient? And if so, how do you circle that square?
Sure. The answer is, is I don't know, and in fact, I think most taxpayers don't know, because I don't believe that it's been well-communicated to the community. Why, for instance, these four administrative positions were so important? There's no elaboration on why these four positions.
And no one asked that question?
Well, this is published from a local publication. It appears that nobody asked a question. What were these administrative positions? What were these other seven to 10 additional staff members? If somebody is performing a critical function, okay? Then we have, you know, we have to ensure that that critical function is executed. But, the answer is, and this is why I'm running, the answer is, we don't have all the information, and we should have all the information.
Okay, what about unfunded mandates? So, we have mandates, but the state's not going to give you any money to do it. How do you, what do you do with that? A mandate is a mandate.
Yeah. Well, that's a difficult question. And I think that's where the school committee, through its elective representatives, have to work with the folks on Beacon Hill to put their money where their mouth is. If you're going to mandate something, you're going to need to have to provide the resources to deliver. And so, I think you've got to work with the folks on Beacon Hill, and I think you also have to work with the folks in Washington DC, our Congress folks and our senators, to look to get the necessary funds to satisfy these mandates.
Okay. What about collective bargaining? Now, you say you're involved in that in your own job. So, what kind of leeway do you think the school has, or the school department has, or the school committee has with the different unions? And how would you approach collective bargaining?
Well, in, at my workplace, how we approached it was is we set, we identified two major challenges. One was safe staffing for our patients. The other was the recruitment and retention of registered nurses. As you may know, there's a crisis of staffing across the whole healthcare industry. A lot of folks blame the pandemic, per se. That's actually not correct, and that's a whole different conversation. But, we identified those two issues. So, all of the collective bargaining that we did was in the context of safe staffing and the recruitment and retention of nurses. So, both management and the union, we identified that having competitive wages coupled with better staffing ratios was going to accomplish that objective of providing safe care for our patients, as well as make it more attractive for folks to want to come and work at my hospital.
So, translate that to working with teachers?
I think the same thing. I think we have to identify what are the paramount goals, what are our priorities, okay? And I'm not here to profess that I have all the answers. I will freely admit that I don't. But, one of the things that, just as a good nurse would do, I would do the same thing as a school committee member, is you've got to listen. You've got to hear people out. If people have a case, make the case. If it's something that is compelling, then we pursue it. If it's not compelling, then we don't. I know that on my committee, we had some folks that liked, that were really intent on what I call nice-to-haves. And my perspective is always, there's nice-to-haves, but there's need-to-haves. And so, safe staffing for our patients and competitive wages to recruit and retain staff, I thought was a need-to-have. So, I take that same sort of perspective of balancing between what's nice versus what's necessary.
Okay, and how do you, turnover. So, turnover with teachers, especially with teachers, how do you address that? And do you think Plymouth has a problem with turnovers? And do you think Plymouth has a problem actually attracting teachers?
I think that's a systemic problem. So, actually, I am the son of a public high school teacher. My father taught in the Watertown Public Schools for over 40 years, okay? He made a career of it. My significant other has been a public school teacher for 25 years. She began her career in the Silver Lake School District, okay? And I know that when my father was a public school teacher, there was never an issue with a shortage of teachers. It is now a chronic problem. It's an acute-on-chronic problem, and it's not just something isolated with the Plymouth School District. It's across the Commonwealth and across the country. And there are many different reasons for it. And I think what it is, is creating a, an environment, a workplace, where people want to belong, they have a sense of belonging, they have a sense of being, and they want to become something, you know? They're invested in their job, they're invested in their students, they're invested in the parents and the guardians of the students. So, if somebody is just looking for a job, being a public school teacher probably isn't the career path for you, because it's very hard. The same thing in nursing. If you're just looking for a job, it's the wrong job for you, because it's very difficult. And so, I think it's just creating a culture where people want to come and they want to contribute.
And how do you create that culture within, there's so many schools in Plymouth, there's tons of schools. How do you create that culture? Give me a couple of examples of how you would create a culture that teachers would say, "I want to work there."
Well, I think one way is promoting academic excellence. I mean, if you have a vibrant advanced placement program, okay? That educators that want to see their students exceed and matriculate in elite schools, that could be a draw. If you have a vibrant vocational program where somebody that may come from the trades and wants to see a new generation of tradesmen and women, okay? To attract them. So, I think it's really excellence and achievement across all different pathways and programs.
Okay, alright, thank you. Question number four. "There are many pressures on school committee members in general, not just in Plymouth, that have to do with DEI within the schools, parental input, curriculum adjustment, state directives, and ongoing societal changes. All of that, along with the heightened need for security in all our schools, leaves the volunteer job of a school committee member very, very full. How would you best learn and keep up with the continually changing roster of information and input that you have to have in your mind all the time as a member of the school committee?"
Well, I think it's doing your homework. I mean, that's why I brought my three-ring binder here. When I was in nursing school, I actually, I career changed. I was in corporate sales for over 20 years, and I decided I wanted to do something more meaningful. And so, I worked full-time during the day, and I went to school, nursing school, on nights and weekends, and I did that for six years to get two nursing degrees. And what I learned to get through nursing school was you major in the majors and you minor in the minors. So, you focus on the big issues, and the peripheral issues you get to, if you can get to. And I think sometimes what happens is that we get lost in the details, and we have, what do they say, paralysis through over-analysis. And I believe that you just take all the information, and again, you prioritize what's most important. I decided to run for this position because I think one of the biggest sins as a citizen is indifference. And I'm concerned on what's going on in our public schools, what's going on with the education of our students. And so, that's why I decided to run for this position, is to advocate for our students. And so, all of this information, how do you stay on top of it? As a nurse, I'm required to stay on top of evidence-based practice. So, we have a nurse educator that provides this information. I'm a union member, I get information from my unions. I also do my own research. So, I'm getting information from multiple sources, and I go through it, and I decide what information is pertinent and what information is impertinent, okay?
Based on how you feel about it, its level of importance?
Well, no, it's, well, it's based on what my job entails. So, you know, I'm on a particularly unit, so I really need to be as expert as possible about what's relevant for the patient.
For your unit, yeah, but I'm saying, translate that whole thing to being on the school committee. So, there's, I mean, there's things flying at all of us all the time, and how do you prioritize what you're going to hone in on or what you're going to concentrate on?
When you say fly in from, where are they flying in from?
Everywhere. I mean, you get data, you get data.
Data from whom?
You tell me. When you're sitting on the school committee, that was my first question. Where do you get your data from? Okay, so, what's affecting the schools?
Where should the data come from? It should come from the school department, right? And it should come from the Massachusetts Department of Education, correct?
Some of it, absolutely. But, what about the societal things? What about safety and security? All the, take that as one example that I cited. That's a huge issue for all schools now. That has drastically changed from where it was 15, 20 years ago.
Sure.
So, that's a subject matter that the school committee, I would assume, would need to be involved in knowing the protocols, knowing the training, knowing the drills, all that. So, that's just one subject.
Sure.
And to be on the school committee is daunting, because there's so many subjects that you have to kind of keep up with.
Sure. Well, I think what it is, is commitment. I'm going to be honest with you, when I was in nursing school, it was a massive data dump, okay? So, if I'm able to process, basically process an entire degree program on a part-time basis while I'm working full-time during the day, I believe that I could also process information.
You can do it, okay?
But, I think what's most important, though, when you start talking about data flow, is, is it coming from a trusted source, okay? There's a lot of information out there, there's a lot of data, but is it good data or is it junk, okay? And so, I think the first thing you do is you look at the source of that information, okay? And you start, again, you start weaning it out, you filter it out. What's a trusted resource? It should be that it's coming from the Department of Education, from the federal government, from Mass DOE, and from the school department. Those should be the primary sources. If we have an issue, you say, for instance, you mentioned safety and security, okay? Not every school has the same issues, you know? The challenges that the Boston Public School System faces is very different from the Plymouth School District, okay? So, you look at... So you look at where there's areas of need, and then you address them.
Okay. Fair enough. Question five. If a friend of yours was considering moving to Plymouth and asked you for your honest assessment of its K-12 system, what would you highlight as the positives and point out as the areas that need improvement? Please be really specific.
In terms of the positive, I think that we have a well-funded school district, for sure. Okay? The numbers bear that out. We have a very diverse school district, I believe. When you consider, I live in the Mannamet section of Plymouth. So you look at all the different villages of Plymouth, they're really, demographically very diverse from each other, whether it's Mannamet, Cedarville, West Plymouth, North Plymouth. So we have a very broad and diverse school district. In terms of infrastructure, we have a mix between some newer schools and some older schools, and maybe even some outdated schools. Okay? But again, to be candid, we look at the school's report card, and we see that we're coming up short in the critical areas. In terms of the benchmarks identified by Mass DOE, over 50% of the students are either not meeting or partially meeting the expectations in our core disciplines. That's a fact. The superintendent of schools acknowledges it in his strategic, his strategy for success, his strategic plan, his three-year strategic plan. So there definitely is need for improvement. And I believe what we need to do is, we really need to go back to the basics. And I believe in our primary grades, we need to really double down on the three hours, read and write and arithmetic. Every student needs to be proficient in the three hours. You look at our middle and our high schools, we have to double down on STEAM, science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math. And I think, I believe that all of our students need to be proficient in those core disciplines.
So would you not recommend to your friend to move to Plymouth for the school systems?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I would be, I would say that it's a work in progress, like many things. It's not perfect. In fact, in the superintendent's strategic plan, he acknowledges that we're not there.
What does Plymouth schools do really, really well?
I think one area is, is that they do have a high graduation rate. Okay? And so I think you can look at that and say that the majority of the students, a high percentage, well over 90% of the students are completing their high school diploma. So I think that is something to applaud and to promote.
Okay. Excellent. So in the last few minutes, you can speak directly to the camera. You can talk about anything we didn't talk about that you feel is important, anything you want to revisit, and tell the folks at home why they should vote for you.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for--
Over here, this camera. Yep.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to share my thoughts with you today. My name is Dan Sullivan. I am running as Nurse Dan for school committee. And I am running because I am concerned about the quality of our public education. Just as I believe that as a registered nurse, the greatest health crisis in our country is maladaptive coping skills, I believe that the greatest crisis in our government is indifference. And I am writing, running, because I want to advocate for our students, for our parents and guardians of our students, and for the taxpayers of the town of Plymouth. I want to see our students become the best that they can be. And I want to see our students be able to have the skills and the knowledge to pursue whatever career pathway that they choose, whether it's college-bound, whether it's the vocations, whether it's the trades, whether it is going on to become an employer, becoming an employee, or entrepreneur. And I do believe that public education is a basic human right, and that we need to make sure that our children develop the skills and the knowledge to be successful in life, and even more importantly, to be happy in life. And so with that, I appreciate you hearing me, and I appreciate you voting for me on May 20th. Nurse Dan, Dan Sullivan for school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right.
And thank you for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org, for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please, make your choices heard by voting in the town election on Saturday, May 20th. Thank you, and good day.